Oh, I do. I love this chair.
It is four o'clock. We'll go ahead and call this November 22 meeting. This is Lina City Commission order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Peck?
Here.
Commissioner Angel?
Here.
Commissioner Arbke?
Here.
Commissioner Jennings?
Here.
Commissioner Larson?
Here.
Would you please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This time we'll open the meeting up for the citizens' open forum if there's anyone who'd like to come forward and discuss something that is not on today's agenda. Doesn't look like anyone is here for that today, so we will move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approved the minutes of November 15, 2010. Item 6.2, Resolution Number 10-6785, supporting the removal of abandoned rail lines at the intersection of Chicago and Elm Streets.
Is there an item the Commissioner would like to see removed or have questions about regarding the consent agenda? I would like to make a note on item 6.2. At a recent North Salina meeting that was organized, one of the concern that was brought up a few times was the condition of railroad crossings and intersections, and it looks like on several of these locations that were mentioned, some relief is on the way there. So, that will be a good thing, and I would accept a motion for the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes five to zero.
Mayor, if I could make one clarification, you are correct about the work on the rail lines. It's being done by KNO, and they own two of the rail lines on Santa Fe, so I don't want to cause any confusion that it's all the rail lines on Santa Fe.
That's a good point of clarification. Thank you. On to development business.
Item 7.1, second reading ordinance Number 10-10,579, approving a preliminary development plan, and a changes zoning district classification from R2 and R3 to PDD on property addressed as 155 North Oakdale.
This ordinance was passed on first reading on November 15, and since that time, no comments have been received. Is there any additional comment today? If not, I'll accept a motion.
Mayor, we move adopt ordinance Number 10-10,579 on second reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance Number 10-10,579 on second reading. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Angel?
Aye.
Commissioner Arbke?
Aye.
Commissioner Jennings?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Mayor Peck?
Aye. Motion passes five to zero.
Item 7.2, acceptance of public alley right-of-way and utility easement dedication for the Donna Elveneer Children's Center site.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Items 7.2 and 7.3 are really companion items that do require separate action and votes, but they fit together in lieu of replating what the Children's Center is proposing to do is dedicate a new alley that would run north to south from the existing alley up to Ash, and then provide additional easements that aren't presently on the property so that water, electricity, phone, and cable can be rerouted out of the alley, and they will run along the south side of Ash Street. They've put landmark surveying to work. They've been out in the field and have identified all these locations and adequately described them, so the action on 7.2 would be to accept those offered dedications and authorize the Mayor to sign the dedication instruments, and that was one of the conditions they needed to fulfill to vacate the alley, which is the next item.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? If not, I will accept a motion.
Mayor, I move that we accept the public alley right-of-way and utility easements dedication on the Donna Elveneer Child Care Center.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the offered alley and right-of-way easements for the Donna Elveneer Children's Center. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes five to zero.
Item 7.3, second reading ordinance Number 10-10,576, vacating the 17-foot public alley right-of-way located west of Oakdale Avenue between Ash Street and Johnston Avenue.
Stranger, did you want to discuss this further?
Wanted to clarify those three items. One, they needed to present a plan for how they developed the site, which you have reviewed and approved. They needed to provide alternative routes for relocating the utilities, and they have reached agreements with all the affected utilities to relocate out of the alley. So, having fulfilled that with approval of this, that will allow that ownership of that alley to transfer to them, and it will be theirs to build over.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions of staff on this? Is there any public comment? If not, I'll accept a motion.
Mayor, I move we adopt ordinance Number 10-10,576 on second reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance Number 10-10,576 on second reading. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Angel?
Aye.
Commissioner Arbke?
Aye.
Commissioner Jennings?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Mayor Peck?
Aye. Motion passes five to zero.
Item 7.4, application Number Z10-9, requesting a change in zoning district classification from RS to I2 to allow construction of a commercial storage building on property addressed as 914 West Grand Avenue.
Mr. Andrew.
Do not see Mr. LaCoire here, but Mr. LaCoire is a owner of a property that's an odd-shaped triangle piece that's located on the west side of West Dry Creek and the north side of Grand, and this property used to be west of Dry Creek, but when the channel was relocated, it ended up as kind of an orphan piece. It ended up on the east side of Dry Creek. This property's never been part of any subdivision plat or been developed with any use that we can find in our records. It's been in the city since 1958, and it's been owned by the current owner since 1985. He is now interested in constructing a large Morton Building to store his hobby cars, and under the current residential zoning, he could build a storage building, but only if he also had a house on the property, and he's not interested in that. The other thing is that the residential zoning would limit the size of any building, and he views that as too restrictive. So, we had a meeting with Mr. LaCoire with the city's development review team and explored options in rezoning the property so he could build a commercial-type storage building. Seemed to be the best option, and the abutting property north and east is the property that is zoned I2, so he applied for that likewise to allow that building to be built. Again, if you look at the property, it's odd-shaped and triangular. It has some limitations as far as its usefulness. He plans to build something that wouldn't be inhabited, wouldn't have plumbing, wouldn't have electricity, and as a result, he could build a storage building with overhead door without having to do any special elevating as long as any electrical receptacles he had were elevated. So, we looked at this with him and determined that the I2 zoning best fit his neighbors and the surroundings and what he wanted to do. The updated comprehensive plan puts this in kind of a mixed area where the desire and goal was to keep commercial zoning designations along Broadway, and that spilled over into this area. So, looking at that and looking at the I2 zoning that's north of Grand and west of 13th, we think the first thing would be to fix that line on the comprehensive plan and clarify that the area west of 13th and north of Grand should be maintained as industrial, and the planning commission voted six to zero to recommend the I2 zoning. This is not platted property, and the applicant indicated that he was in agreement with plating it, but he wanted to defer that till he actually applied for a building permit, and the planning commission agreed with that. That would be an item for you to consider either to not approve this without a plat or to defer that requirement till he's ready and has a survey for his building permit. With that, I'd be open to any questions.
Questions, Mr. Andrew? I was curious what the, and maybe I overlooked this, but it talked about here that as proposed, the building would have no electrical service, and then it also mentions plumbing, and then you talked about electrical a little bit. What's the significance of that?
Primarily for floodplain purposes. It's whether a building is habitable or not habitable, as long as you're building a vehicle that's primarily for the storage of vehicles that you can move in and out, and you don't have any office space or finish space. FEMA does not require you to elevate that building because there's really nothing in their value that can't be moved out, but if you have office space or finish space in there, then there's a requirement that the building be elevated. So, we look at buildings, and if they are strictly for storage and have no habitable space, no plumbing for restrooms, no offices, then we don't have to require that they be elevated. If they do, then those spaces, the lowest floor has to be elevated above the flood elevation.
Well, my question is, I have a hard time believing that if he's going to be using this as a storage facility and a place to work on cars, that he's going to have no expectation of having electricity present at any point, and so I was just curious if he were to put in a couple overhead lights and a few outlets, does that, I mean, obviously it's not a finish space at that point, but does that change the nature of this?
What it does is then we look at the clearances for those, and we would make sure that they're elevated above the right elevation. So, we have some buildings in town where the wall plugs are three and a half feet off the floor to make sure that they're above the flood elevation. So, that's what we would do there. In the case of plumbing, there's simply no sewer anywhere in the vicinity, and there's little likelihood of getting it.
But were he to want to come back some point, put those at the appropriate levels, that's not an issue?
I would agree. That's what he told us at our DRT meeting, and so that's what we reported, but it seems likely that he'd be wanting to tinker on cars in there after dark, and electricity wouldn't be a surprise.
Okay. Thank you. Further questions? Is there any public comment? If not, I'll accept a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve application Z10-9, requesting a change in zoning district classification from RS to I2 to allow the construction of a commercial storage building to be located at 914 West Grand Avenue.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept application or approve application Number Z10-9, which is ordinance Number 10-10,580. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes five to zero. Administration.
Item 8.1, Resolution Number 10-6784, authorize an interlocal agreement with Saline County for I5 computer usage and service from January 1, 2011, to December 31, 2012.
Mr. Rolz.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. We have a two-year contract with the county right now to use our, what we call the I5 or the S400, and all of our public safety is on that right now. We've been doing this since I've been here for eight years. It expires at the end of December, so it's time for us to do a new two-year agreement. Last year, in fact, the last several years, we've been trying to move off the platform to a Microsoft-based platform, but the cost was really high, and we never could afford it. This year, we got a quarter million dollar grant to help us with that, and we went ahead and pulled that off. So, sometime in the first half of next year, we should move all our public safety over to a Windows-based system. This system does all our public safety, so the county's use of this new system will be much less sometime in the next two years. So, they're negotiating an agreement. They say they should not pay the full price like they have been, which makes sense, so we decided to go on connections. There will be the same number of connections January 1, but there could be a lot less in July. Might be the same, and there probably will be a lot less than next January 1. So, we spent a lot of time with the county, and by the way, our two departments get along very, very well, and we've come up with an agreement of about $600 a connection and about 177 of them to start off. So, we will do that if this is okay with you, and then next July, we will count again. The county's intent would be to have a smaller number, and if it is, it is, and then next January. But their intent is, quite frankly, to get off the machine totally. Quite frankly, that's hard to do when you look at history and things, but that is their intent, and it could happen. If it doesn't happen, we'll come to another two-year agreement in two years. If not, we'll deal with it. We did change all the dates. We took the old contract and just changed the words. They are paying about $112,000 this year. If they paid full price this year, it'd be about $106,000, but I would assume that would drop off significantly in July. And then they would like a provision that if we're, if they, we don't renew after two years, they have some invested money in that machine. We bought it, it was about $300,000. We paid about 52% of it, 911 paid a chunk, and the county paid a chunk. So, they said in two years, if we don't renew, they would like to get their money back out of it by just saying we won't charge them for the equipment we have now during the public safety. We've, actually, we've each split that cost half-half, and we'd share the electricity too, so that's a good deal for both sides. Frankly, in seven years, we've already had it for five years. Two more years, the equipment won't be worth anything on the open market, and it's really a moot point, but they would like to have it in there, and that's okay with me. You have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Questions?
Let me kind of grapple with that last part in my head. If, Jason, you might have to help out too, but if there's like an interlocal agreement that covers maintenance of a road or a building and equipment is used for that at the end of the contract, is there normally a concern about getting monies back on equipment, graders, motors, whatever, that might have been used to do that maintenance? And then, can you help me out with some of the maybe different reasons why there should be a consideration for that?
Yeah, to answer your first question, no, there typically wouldn't be considered any asset interest in that maintenance equipment for, say, roadway. This goes back, the language goes back to the prior agreement, I believe, where the county had claimed an asset interest in them. I don't know, I may look at the city attorney. I know there were discussions at that time as to whether they really had an asset interest in the equipment prior to this agreement. I think it was determined that they basically did, but my recollection isn't real. It's a little bit foggy, to be quite honest with you on that aspect, so I'm going to turn to Greg and see if his recollection's any better than mine.
There were discussions along that line, and that is what prompted the original inclusion of what is Paragraph 8B, which was an acknowledgement that there is a legal inequitable title holding by both the city and the county in the equipment. The prints you see there in black is the agreement as it existed over the last two years. And I can't remember frankly which iteration it was that, which year that was included, but anyway, that has certainly been the case most recently. This modification, or I suppose clarification, now that circumstances are as we know them today, is what prompted the additional language just to take it that next step as we continue along the line of the useful life of this current equipment, is my understanding of where it's going now.
We bought all new equipment. We bought equipment for here, and we bought the same equipment for the Bicentennial Center, and we marry them up so every time a transaction here hits there, so we're totally backed up. That happened about this time in 2005. At that time, they put up 28% of the cost. We did 52% and 911 did 20%. And the agreement, the next agreement that happened, we said we would retain that interest. Okay, now, quite frankly, 0% of anything is still going to be 0%. So, we can argue about, I'm saying, in seven years, this equipment isn't going to be worth anything on the open market, so if we say they get 35% or 20% of that, it's still, it's going to be a very, zero, a very small fee.
Yeah, and Commissioners, initially, Jack and I had that conversation because I wanted to match up that value of the equipment with that storage, the housing of any required equipment that's mentioned later in that same sentence, and try to match up the values if we could. But when he said, you know, the way this equipment works in two years, there's really no value to it, it didn't make a whole lot of sense at that point to spend much time on it. It's fine in writing, but the impact's not really there.
Yeah, I didn't, and as long as the city attorney would be comfortable that it doesn't set any sort of precedence, the first thing I thought of is, well, okay, if that is here, but then we start talking about a storage building and shared maintenance, shared cost of a building, or whatever it is that some of these might affect if there's no danger in that by this agreement. I agree, any type of electronics just deteriorates to nothing pretty quick, so.
Yeah, and again, I'm trying to remember back to when that issue came about. I believe there was some legal implication related specifically to this situation. I just can't remember what the specific facet was, but certainly didn't look at that and believe there was any relationship to any other aspects that we were willing to relate.
That's my understanding as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment? See none, I will accept a motion.
Mayor, I move we adopt Resolution Number 10-6784.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution Number 10-6784. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes five to zero.
Item 8.2, discussed process to fill city commission seat vacancy to serve until the next general election.
Well, here we are again.
Mayor, again, I'm going to recuse myself from this discussion, so.
Thank you. You have anything you want to lead in with, Jason?
Well, just real quick, we didn't give you a lot of new information here. We did go ahead and put in the requirements if someone were to file, which is a citizen of the U.S., qualified elector of Salina, and reside within the city limits, so that you definitely have to go with. Anything outside of that, you really have a lot of discretion. Obviously, last time, the discussion sort of focused on limiting to former commissioners with an intent behind that versus opening it up, and then ultimately, whichever way you do it, you'll want to kind of open it up, have a closing date for receiving, let's say, expression of interest forms and whatever else someone would want to provide, and depending on what you do, then we'll have to try to work with you to figure out how to go about, you know, the process or logistics of narrowing that down, because you will have to deal with all that in a public forum, and it's not real comfortable sometimes.
So, these people do have to fill out something?
Oh, I think you would want them to. I don't think you would want them to.
Or, well, you said, the way you phrase this in here, and that the use of the expression of interest form is acceptable, but I mean, if they just hand us a resume?
It's up to you. I mean, again, you can handle it however you guys agree to. We typically use expression of interest form for all committees, so it just is a nice tool for that, but you don't have to use that if you don't want to.
Okay. And it does look like we do, I think we all concluded that we'd like to fill that seat, but it does look like that would be legally the best route to follow as well.
Everything in the statute appeared to require that. Mayor and Commissioners, I can go into more detail if you'd like, and I did also look at any secondary sources on any commentary that did not provide any information of the contrary. It might also be of interest, I did pull the attorney general's opinion relative to that public discussion versus executive session discussion. It might be of interest, so you know that that wasn't just for the entertainment value that I'd come to that conclusion, but the synopsis quickly says that the personnel matters exception to the open meetings law pertains to employees of public agencies. Persons appointed to public boards and committees are not employees, they are public officers. Therefore, discussions concerning the qualifications of candidates for such appointed positions cannot take place in an executive session, but must be held in an open meeting, which I'm sure you can tell that that is dealing, in this particular case, specifically with the appointment to persons on boards and commissions as a public officer. But certainly, as you would expect, this is an appointed role in filling the vacancy, and there is no higher level of public office in the city than a member of the city commission. So, I think pretty quickly by analogy, it would apply to the situation you're in.
Sure. Okay. Appreciate that. Well, it seemed like, I think where we left it last time was opening this up to whether or not we wanted to open this process up to the general public or keep this limited to past city county commissioners, that type of thing. Has anyone had a new revelation in the last week?
Elected official is what you're saying, then? That lives within the city limits?
Correct.
Right. No one? Good? Are you good? Yeah, all good?
You're good with what?
Leaving it the way we had, that we would prefer to start with an elected official before we open it. Is that what you just asked?
Yeah, what I'd like to make sure, Commissioner Angel, her preference seemed to be to open this up to the general public, and it seemed like the three of us were wanting to limit it to a previously elected official, and I didn't know if that was still the route we wanted to go or not, or if either of you had changed your mind and would like to open this up.
I'm fine with either method. I think that there's enough unofficial statement by past city commissioners that would be interested in this, that there is going to be at least one position or person interested, and it's more than that, but Commissioner Angel's concern was to not limit it. And I think we further had a discussion of, well, we can open it up and then look at those past commissioners first, and I think her concern, and I don't want to misquote it, so please tell me if I'm wrong, was if we don't have viable candidates, then our timeline's going to be extended to then open it up to the general public, and it's just going to drag it out longer and maybe rule out some good people. So, I don't have a problem in opening it up, but I think some of the wisest choices that come out will be those from past city commissioners. It just makes it harder if we're going to have 100 people to sort through, and we're going to have to do that right here in a meeting, but I'm fine with doing that.
Okay.
What he said.
So.
And I see where he's, I see what he's getting at. If we had another 30 days to where we could start with previous commissioners and see what kind of feedback we get from them, but if there are none to pick from, or they all say, "Thank you, but no thank you," then we have to start all over and open it up to the public. So, I see what, I understand that that's what Commissioner Jennings was speaking to, that if we open it to everybody right now, but pull from the elected official pool first. Am I correct?
Yeah, I think outside of that, it'll be difficult, because we will be advocating for personal merits on individuals that we know, but possibly the rest of the commission don't, whereas when we're looking at past city commissioners, we can say that person served in this capacity of the community, and, you know, go on from there. So, it makes it more difficult when we do open it up, but I see the wisdom in saying, well, we could get too far down the line and then need to open it up to the public and expand it from there. So, I don't have any problem with doing that from the get-go.
Very diplomatic responses. Well, I don't know that we could necessarily, I mean, can we construct this process in such a way that we solicit, open the solicitation up to anybody, but give a preference to previous commissioners? And then, if we do that, then in this process, if you don't like the, obviously, if we start selecting from the general populace, we didn't. if we start selecting from the general populace, we didn't, we didn't find the Commission candidates, previous Commission, Commissioners who had threw their name in to be satisfactory enough. And so, again, my thought on this is, it's going to be an open process, we'd like to, I think, narrow that pool down so that the public debate isn't as awkward as it could be. But, if it's the preference of the three of you to open this up to the general public, we can sure do that.
Could we open it up and say those with prior public service will be strongly considered? Or is that narrowing it down too much before we even get anything?
To me, the real question is, is, if you open it up to the public, and you, I mean, you could, you could, let's say, you can communicate your preference, if I don't fit into that preference, am I going to be willing to even give you the chance to look at me later, on the assumption you might get to my pool?
Right.
I wouldn't. But, but the, the thinking is, is, do you want to, do you want to advocate your preferences now, or do you want to wait until you get your pool, and then advocate your preferences in your review? It's really, I suppose it's up to you, unless there's a logistical or legal issue, it's really up to you to do that.
Well, I, I think we will get, I think we will get qualified candidates from past Commissions, and I think we'll have a selection to choose from, and I think that would be a nice, small pool to look at, and, and certainly find someone who's qualified.
Well, obviously, you must know something that I don't know, so, we'll do it your way, Mayor.
Well, there's two others we'll take into account.
I know, I know, but I, I haven't, in, in conversations with people asking me, "How are we handling this?" And, and I had several people tell me that they agree that past Commissioner or past elected official might be a little bit more suited for this because of what's entailed here.
Well, a comment on that real quick is, not only are they, I think, well-suited, especially if they've served fairly recently, but they've also been elected before. They've actually been chosen by the community at some point.
And, and just for the benefit of the public listening, who may not have listened the last time, I'm presuming that you're still in agreement that you're looking for someone who would not intend to run in the next election, so...
Correct, I am in agreement with that.
You're not talking, it depends how you look at that, some could look at that as setting the plate, others could look at it as providing an opportunity, but nonetheless, you're not interested in putting someone in a position to run further. So, so if someone looks at it and says, "Well, you may be limiting the choices and therefore taking away opportunities for people," there really isn't a lot of opportunity. When April hits, that, that's done, and for someone to run again, they'll have to wait till the general April election after the upcoming. So, it really doesn't affect this election.
Correct. They'd have to run in 20...
13.
2013 is what you're saying. I thought you were going to say something.
Yeah.
Right? Not this coming election, right?
Correct.
2013, okay.
Okay.
Well, and if I can ask a quick question real, while we're on the subject here, and then, are we treating this the same way that we treat all the other expression of interests for different boards that we have with the city? In other words, all those will be compiled, and we usually, you know, the, the Mayor usually has the, he goes, it goes with our recommendation, and then he appoints that person. Being that this is a little bit different, are we discussing all of this here all over again, again?
Yes.
Something he said made me think, every single candidate?
Yes.
You, you very well could. The, what you typically do with the boards and committees is, is again, you have it, you have the copies of the expression of interest forms, you provide, I think, I guess your thoughts on, on those folks, but the Mayor puts together a recommendation in the form of the resolution, and then you vote. And so, you could just vote for it as it is, which I think historically does happen quite often, or any Commissioner could, you know, talk to the other Commissioners and try to say, "Well, I like all but this appointment, I want to do something different." That's, that's how it usually works. This is really open-ended, you're not, there, there are no rules except for the, the minimum qualifications here. So, it's really up to you. So, you could use that process, or you could just simply say, "Well, give them to us, and let's talk about it in the meeting." It's, it's really up to what you want to do.
Will those people be here in attendance?
They can.
To talk to us? I mean...
If you, I mean, if you want to interview them in public, you could do that. If you want to not drag them through that, you could choose not to.
I don't think we need to do that. I don't think anyone wants to serve that bad.
That might limit your, that might limit your pool, wouldn't it?
They should.
Yeah. Well, hey, there's a tactic.
Yeah, so really, it's pretty open-ended as to what you want to do.
Okay, I'm, I'm following.
Or what you can do.
Okay.
You know, a few times, Mayor, you'd mentioned recent in past city Commissioners. Do you have something in mind there? I don't, I'm not, not trying to put you on the spot there, but I, I, I don't know if my term, I'm, I'm a hair older than you, so I don't know if my term "recent" is, is different than your term "recent," or if there's some, I don't, I wouldn't want to dissuade any past Commissioner from not filing that they might think "recent" means "last term" or something along those lines.
That's a, that's a good point. I, I say that because in, in my head, I, you know, I take a look at, you know, at issues related to, you know, the park situation, contamination at Shillane Air Force Base, I, I take a look at these issues that may or may not have developments within, within a given timeframe that this potential Commissioner could be serving. And there's a lot of back history to those issues that I think a Commissioner who has experience more recently in dealing with them would be of greater value than someone who served in the early 80s, and may not be as, as close to that situation. And that, of course, in my own mind, really does limit that pool, but I certainly, I don't know how much of an interest we would get from very recent Commissioners. So, I, I, I wouldn't want to dissuade someone from...
Good, yeah.
...being interested.
Sure, okay. The, the other thing that we had talked about in the, the last meeting was past county Commissioners. I guess I can see both the pros and the cons of that, but I, I have to ask on the, and maybe this is a question for City Attorney, but on the parks issue, I mean, are, could there be some type of issues that we need to address the City Commission, that if a county Commissioner is appointed, they'd have to recuse themselves because of prior knowledge through executive sessions or something like that, that would just cause us to go with four people right away on some of those issues?
That's a good question. I think that's theoretically possible. It seems a bit remote, but theoretically possible.
Okay.
And they would just have to limit possibly what their input is, not necessarily not participate in what advice you might be giving. That'd be right?
Oh, I, yes, I think that's, I think that's true. I'm...
Okay. We could be assisted through that, though. Guided.
Oh, I think so.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, alright.
Okay. I think that was the...
Well, no, I was just going to say, they have to reside within the city limits, so that does narrow that down a little bit.
Yes, well, that's true. That's true.
Okay, then. Are we any closer?
Make a decision there, Chair.
You know what, here's what we're going to do, if it's okay with, if it's okay with you guys, and I, let's go ahead and, let's go ahead and limit this to past city and county Commissioners, and, who are not planning on running in the next election. What else do we need to cover? The, we need to cover the...
You probably, I would presume that if you have full agreement this evening, then as quickly as staff can get that information out, obviously, it'll be covered in the newspaper the next day, but we'll be prepared to handle it. You're going to want a closing date for receiving any interest, and if you do want them to use an expression of interest form, just tell us, and it's, it's an easy thing, it's on the webpage, and they can attach anything they want. If not, if you want a resume, I mean, you probably need to...
Let's do a simple expression.
I have another quick question. In the event that any of them are currently serving on one of the city's boards, what happens to that? Let's just, let's just pretend that there's a city Commissioner on Parks and Rec, but they're interested in coming back here for two and a half months. What happens to their open spot on Parks and Rec? Or does that prevent them from even filling out a, a desire to, to sit here for two and a half months?
I don't believe that would preclude them from applying. You do have the duality of office question, that will, in some cases, require that they resign from their current role. Let's take the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, because they are advisory to you. That is what, in that particular case, creates a duality of office problem. They could not continue in both roles because that body is advisory to you. In doing a quick inventory, I'm not coming up with a real good example, other than possibly the Board of Zoning Appeals, because their function is independent of you, but...
Well, so they, if they have two or three years left on their term, they're roughly giving that up to serve here for two and a half months, and then they can't go back until, because someone will be appointed in there. When they, they come off that board, I'm, I'm taking that another person will be appointed to fill their, their seat, so this person is basically giving up the rest of that term, just to come and sit here for two and a half months, and then they're out until it's time to... The reason for that is that there are some past Commissioners on two boards right now. Two Commissioners that I can think of that are on two boards right now with the city.
Greg, would there be a means of the, of a board member in that situation to, in essence, not fulfill the obligations of the board role? In other words, not go to the meetings and participate in any way over this period that they would be sitting in for the Commission? Don't you love the what-ifs?
(laughing)
And then, after their Commission term is finished, since there's no future obligation, go back and fulfill their board obligation? Is that something that, or do you think that still technically gets us into that?
The only thing is, the two boards that I'm thinking of, they meet more than once a month.
Yeah.
They do meet more frequently.
I'm sorry to have to say once again, I'd have to look at that a little more carefully, I think, I don't know that I'm...
You just didn't know what to study before you came here, did you?
I didn't anticipate this one, no.
Okay. Pop quiz.
So, you can go ahead and figure out what you want to do today, though.
Yeah.
That's something that, what, instead of limiting, and say, well, you can't be, you can't be considered if you're on a city board, leave that open, you get the answer later, and then when you go through and review your, your folks that are interested, you can know at that point in time whether there's an option.
Okay, yeah, that works.
I would, I think the scenario you described, particularly when the governing body is in control of the appointment of any replacement, or the prospect of that person taking a sabbatical, if you will, from their, their role in the advisory role, I would, I would think we could make that work. I'd want to look to be sure there isn't anything that precludes that, but offhand, I would think you could make that work.
Okay.
Even possibly if they step down officially and were reappointed after that term, if that's what needed to happen.
Well, that's, that's another way we could look at that as well.
How does the calendar back up, then, when we look at the date on this?
Well, the filing deadline is Tuesday, January 25th. My thinking is that you, you're going to want some time, because I have a feeling it may take you more than one meeting. Could be wrong, it just depends on the quantity of, of interested parties. So, if, you know, if you have the full month of December and said, "All interest provided by December 31st," I don't know what date that is, maybe the, whatever the, wherever the Friday falls, but that would give people adequate time. Is it on the 31st, actually?
Yeah, the 31st is Friday.
Okay, well, in that case, that works out just perfectly. But, that gives a full month, and then that means you can pick it up in January, hopefully in a couple of meetings, get taken care of and be ready, and then they come in, obviously, after, you'd make the formal action, whatever the first Commission meeting you have, after that Tuesday, January 25th date.
So, in essence, we would, we would meet as just four, for maybe two meetings? If I'm, I think I've studied this long enough. Maybe you guys haven't, but I've looked at this hard, because we would not meet the Monday of the Martin Luther King holiday, and I believe Commissioner Arbke's last meeting would be January 10th. We would meet the 17th. 24th is a Monday, we'd meet then with four. 25th is the last filing deadline.
So, possibly just the 24th.
Just the 24th.
Yes.
And then, the first, what would that be, the 7th of February? No, 31st.
31st would be the 25th.
Okay, so then it would be the 7th.
Yeah, you could choose if you wanted to have a special meeting to make an appointment, so you didn't want to wait that far into February. You could do that.
I, I agree with that, yeah.
But, you can, we can, again, you could kind of make that call later.
Sorry for being so logistic about this.
No, I need those details.
Okay.
Yeah, that sounds like an idea.
Okay, yeah, if you're okay with that, Mayor.
Yep, so we'll end the collection of expression of interest forms by the 31st.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then we'll take action sometime after, well, after the 25th.
Mm-hmm.
What else do you need, Jason?
Let's see, I mean, I mean, read this back to you. You're looking at former city Commissioners or county Commissioners with no intent to run in the general election, closing date, December 31st.
No intention to run 2011, make sure you stress that.
Yeah, for this, yeah, this year. Just submit an expression of interest form, and they can add anything they wish, it's up to them.
Yeah.
Does that get you there?
Sure.
Greg, Mike, anything else that I need to consider?
Do you want to clarify whether attaching a resume is an option, or...
I don't think any of them...
I prefer they don't.
(laughing) That's why I asked, so...
Yeah, yeah, just plain me and I.
Yeah, I don't know that you'd limit them and what they can give you, but I certainly, if you don't need it, we, you know, I encourage them to go to all that work.
Sure.
Right.
Okay.
I don't, Greg, Kevin?
The only question that's occurring to me at all is, is there considerable significance to waiting until after the filing deadline, rather than simply having the assurance in advance that the person is not running?
Up to make the appointment.
So, to close the, so to close the span...
You know, that's a, that's a good point. If we're bringing them on, we certainly should be able to trust that they're not...
Going to change their mind.
Going to change their mind and run, and I think we can take them at their word. I think, yeah.
So...
You would hope that they wouldn't get appointed and then have to be stripped of the appointment, so that they can run.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
That was all, I was wondering if, if that enabled us to make the appointment more closely in time to the effective date of Commissioner Arbke's resignation, I think.
Sure, that's up, again, that's up to you.
If that, if that leaves you time to, for your deliberations.
Did you, were you, something just, I would just rather wait until after the deadline to put your name in to make our appointment. If, I think we have a couple of weeks, we could do a special meeting, but...
It's entirely up to you.
I would wait for someone to get on and change their mind and even have to get into that.
Okay, well, it's entirely up to you.
That's fine with me.
Okay, that's true. Yeah, let's see with the way we had it.
Okay.
Or the way you had it, Mayor.
So, so the, the way you had it was to make the appointment after the first meeting, which could be special or general, but the first meeting after the Tuesday, the 25th?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, would, would we then have a couple of meetings before the 25th, in which we're going to discuss the candidates, but then ultimately not, then vote on the candidate until the special meeting, and then vote on that and cast the appointment in a special meeting? Is that how that would go?
There's three Mondays, the 3rd, the 10th, and the 24th in question now.
Yeah, I mean, if you followed the, the path we just talked about, you would deliberate in the meeting opportunities you have in January, but you wouldn't officially make an appointment until after, the meeting after the 25th.
Mm-hmm.
Again, the other option is, is if you wanted to, someone said, "Well, I promise you I'm not going to run," and you want to make that appointment earlier, you can choose to do that, if you like, and then they could start sitting in the chair a little bit earlier, if you wanted, if you wanted to avoid having any gap at all of just having four Commissioners. It's, it's really your preference. I mean, there are times when, when, you know, any of you may be out of town, and we have four, and we operate, it does force a supermajority, so it just depends how important that is to you.
Can we just wing it?
Yeah, that's what I said, do we have to decide that now?
Yeah, I mean, well...
Well, let's...
Politically? Politically wing it? Well, winging, I mean, that, just, I mean, do we have to set these dates in concrete right now?
Yeah, that'd probably be okay. I'd, I'd prefer to just get this done.
Okay.
And get, and get these loose ends tied up on this. You know, I know, I know Commissioner Angel's thinking is, you know, we don't want to get into any mess with someone serving and then deciding that they'd like to go ahead and with someone serving and then deciding that they'd like to go ahead and run as well. I think the probability of that happening is pretty slim.
Okay.
Thoughts from either one of you?
No, that's fine. We'll go back to Plan A. Which was waiting until the...
The 25th. Okay.
Yeah. Collect the OIs till December 31st, then we will discuss them and make an appointment
After the 25th.
After the 25th of January.
Yeah. And if you want me just to hit all those really quickly, we talked about whether you'd need a formal action. It'd be good to have a motion second to vote and then someone could easily just say, "So moved," and get moving on it if I say it right.
Okay.
That work for you?
Sure.
Okay. For qualifications, you're looking at a former city commissioner or county commissioner that would have no interest in running in the upcoming general election, that is a fairly recent member. I'm going to say plus or minus right around four or five years, generally speaking. Is that what you're looking for?
Well, I don't think we're going to limit that.
No.
Not going to limit that.
No.
Yep.
Okay. So we'll scratch that part of it. So just former city commissioner, county commissioner with no interest in running in the upcoming election. You will ask that they submit an expression of interest form. The closing date of receiving forms would be the end of the workday on December 31st and your anticipated appointment date would be the first meeting scheduled after January 25th.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that that is the process for filling our vacant city commission seat. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero. Commissioner Arbke recusing himself. Is there any further business today?
Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes five to zero. We adjourn.
Was this at your place? This was at my place.
It wasn't.
Was this, it's county commission stuff? For their meeting, it was from their meeting last week, so is it just a straggler here on the desk? Interesting. What is this doing here?
I would say you have to ask the clerk.
That was some leftover from a meeting.